Testing Check one two Testing one two three four
Thank you for watching! Please like, share and subscribe! Also, don't forget to activate the notification button to not miss any recent uploads! Just as fire lives forever, so do the words of Torah live forever. When one draws near to fire, one is burned by it. When one moves away from fire, one is chilled. On Shavuot, we warm ourselves by the light of Torah, our precious heritage. As the council discusses and makes decisions for the City of Victorville, let us never forget our heritage and the rules that have been laid out before us. Grant our leaders wisdom and forbearance. May they guide with integrity. May they govern with justice and compassion. Help us all to appreciate one another and to respect the many ways that we may serve May our city always merit your protection. Teach us to give thanks for what we have by sharing it with those who are in need. May the one who creates harmony on high bring peace to us to which we say amen.
We have one presentation this evening. That's Public Works Day proclamation. And Erica King and Andrew Quarton will be the recipients.
Yeah, this is my first public works. Been with the city about two years now. I'm pretty excited for it. So we'll see how this goes and I'm looking forward to many more.
Well, thank you. It'll be my first, so I'm excited too. I enjoy the children and I'm really looking forward to it. I'm pretty sure it'll be a wonderful event. Thank you so much. Here you are.
It is six o'clock and I call to order the meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville and the City Council, sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Successor Agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District and the Victorville Housing Trust. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Kennedy?
Here.
Councilmember McEckern?
Here.
Mayor Garcia?
Here.
The absence of Councilmember Negretti and Mayor Protem Cox is noted.
Thank you. May we have announcements on closed session by our city attorney, please?
Yes, thank you Mayor Garcia. We had six items listed on the agenda this evening. However, item F was pulled. We did not have a quorum on that item as Councilmember McEckern had a potential conflict of interest due to the location of his business next to the property in question. So there's no, there was no discussion on that item whatsoever. The other five items, items A and C, sorry, A and D are related as existing litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D1. That is a litigation of the SEC versus the City of Victorville and the case number set forth on the agenda. There's no reportable action with respect to that item. Items B, C, and E were also, that is anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D4. They were all related to the same piece of litigation affecting the different entities and there's no reportable action with respect to those items either.
Thank you. Now we will have the invocation and it will be delivered by Congregational about God, the Mar, Shell, Mahala, Mary Fishel, and then we will have the Pledge of Allegiance which will be led by our Police Chief Sam Lucia.
Thank you. As we gather tonight for the Victorville City Council meeting, we are reminded of the Jewish holiday Shavuot that also occurs this week. Shavuot celebrates the giving of the Torah and its commandments to the people. The Torah and its rules for living a godly life are compared to fire. Just as fire lives forever, so do the words of Torah live forever. When one draws near to fire, one is burned by it. When one moves away from fire, one is chilled. On Shavuot, we warm ourselves by the light of Torah, our precious heritage. As the council discusses and makes decisions for the City of Victorville, let us never forget our heritage and the rules that have been laid out before us. Grant our leaders wisdom and forbearance. May they guide with integrity. May they govern with justice and compassion. Help us all to appreciate one another and to respect the many ways that we may serve you. May our city always merit your protection. Teach us to give thanks for what we have by sharing it with those who are in need. May the one who creates harmony on high bring peace to us to which we say amen. Thank you.
We have one presentation this evening. That's Public Works Day Proclamation. And Erica King and Andrew Quaranton will be the recipients. You will come forward.
Proclamation Public Works Day. Well, I already called you forward, so you're here. In recognition of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments and to provide public awareness of the issues involved in providing public works, services to the community, the City Council of the City of Victorville hereby proclaim, May 21st, 2015 is the Public Works Day in the City of Victorville. Would you like to say a few words?
Say that there's about 300 kids from various schools throughout Victorville that participate. So every year it gets, you know, I think, a little bit better for the community. So we're looking forward to it this year.
Yeah, this is my first Public Works. Been with the city about two years now. I'm pretty excited for it. So we'll see how this goes and I'm looking forward to many more.
Well, thank you. It'll be my first, so I'm excited too. I enjoy the children and I'm really looking forward to it. I'm pretty sure it'll be a wonderful event. Thank you so much. Here you are.
May we have our city clerk present the agenda and any revisions for the record, please?
The City Council of the City of Victorville welcomes the public's participation in tonight's meeting. Persons who wish to appear to address the council on a specific item or any item that does not appear on the agenda are requested to complete one of the white speaker cards located in the council chambers lobby and give it to the city clerk prior to the meeting. The mayor will call upon each individual who has submitted a speaker card. Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, state law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments are to be limited to three minutes per speaker or less as deemed necessary by the mayor. Communications are to be addressed directly to the city council. Individual comments to staff or members of the audience are not permitted. Any individual or group who engages in disruptive conduct during the meeting will be removed from the chambers by order of the mayor. Thank you for your cooperation. All documents to be considered for approval at this meeting are before the council. And there are no revisions for tonight's agenda. Mayor Garcia?
Thank you. We do not have any appeal hearings this evening. So we will be moving on to public hearings. And I do have a couple of cards. The first one will be Dexter Caldwell. Next one will be Luanne LaFleur.
Mayor Garcia, I think this is just for the first public hearing. I think those cards are probably related to the second public hearing.
Oh, for B2. You're right. Correct.
The one, this public hearing is related to the Hope Academy Charter, Inc.
You're right. Sorry. My mistake. Okay, we have item B1. I opened the public hearing and I do not have any cards for item B1. This one is for PLN 15-00006, Zone Change, Hope Academy Charter, Inc. City Clerk, will you please read the ordinance?
Hi, just for the record, Mayor Garcia, is the public hearing now closed?
I close the public hearing.
Thank you. Ordinance number 2336. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Victorville approving zone change PLN 15-00006 to reclassify property from C2 General Commercial to C1 Neighborhood Service Commercial with an environmental exemption on property located at 17125 Silica Road, Hope Academy, Inc.
And for approval?
Second.
Motion by Mr. McEckern, second by Mr. Kennedy to waive further reading and introduce ordinance number 2336. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries with Mr. Negretti and Mr. Cox absent.
Now we move on to B2. I opened the public hearing and this is for public hearing continued from May 5th, 2015. Victorville Water District Conservation Program, Ordinance Number VWD-012. And I do have two cards for this item. I have Dexter Caldwell.
Stand at the microphone, please.
Anyway, I'm here to suggest...
Could you state your name, please?
Oh, Dexter Caldwell is my name. I'm here to come up with ways to save water for the entire district, the state, the city. I figure there's what, about 300,000 people in the desert up here? And I can save probably about 600,000 gallons of water per day just with people's participation. This is the first thing. Goes in the toilet. Stops this much water from being wasted that you're not getting money for. You've already paid for it, now it's gone. Let's take it out and pour it on a plant. But in the bathroom, this may not be enough to hold the whole washing of your hands to get from cold water to hot water. That's the problem. So as in our bathroom, I have a pitcher. Simple dollar, dollar store. Pour those for a dollar so they can sit in your bathrooms. I also have this in my kitchen. It's this one. Because this handles about two quarts and that's about what it takes to get my water hot. And that's turned it all the way hot. So I've just saved this much water. But these get full fast. What do we do with them? Well, we need to put them in something, so I have come up with another idea. Simple bucket. We can pour two gallons of water in here. And also, as I do at our house with all these that I use, I stick this in the shower. Waiting for my water to warm up. It takes this much. That's two gallons. That's if everybody does it. We're saving hundreds and thousands of gallons of water. Now what do I do with that water? I put it in this and I go water my plants in my front yard. I have nine of them that survive on this. Not another dime. Those are the water company. That's it, folks.
Thank you.
Can all say it started here in Victorville.
Next I have Luanne LaFleur.
Good evening, Mayor. Well, really two things on this. I would like to know exactly how the ordinance is going to read and is the City of Victorville ever going to think about letting us use our gray water through filtration systems to water our green spaces? Personally, from our homes, other cities in the state mandate it? And is that something that will ever be considered here? That's all I have to say on this part of it because I'll get you next time. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to come up and speak? If not, I close the public hearing. Then we have, do we have any?
Mrs.? I believe there's a staff report.
Yeah. Yeah, Mrs. Mayor and members of the council. This item along with item B3 are somewhat related but do have to be taken in separate action. But resulting from the governor's executive order to cause the reduction in water consumption by 25% statewide and since April 1st, having relied upon the State Water Resources Control Board to actually establish rules regarding how water consumers such as the Victorville Water District is to implement. Guidance has come out. Staff has actually put together a presentation and both Christian Gunter and Dana Armstrong have worked to prepare that presentation. I believe Dana is going to come up and give a presentation on probably the better detail as to what's happened over the last 60 days, what the rules mean to us and what the emergency order means to us in terms of implementation going forward, starting June 1st.
Thank you. Mayor Garcia and City Council members, I have a presentation, as Keith mentioned, about these, the two items this evening. The Water Conservation Ordinance Number VWD-012 and the Proposed Resolution VWD-15-06. I'm going to put on my reading glasses here. Before we get into the details of those two items, I'd like to give a little bit of background on why we're considering these items tonight. As most everyone knows, California is in the midst of a serious drought. The three-year period from the fall of 2011 to the fall of 2014 was the driest in California since record keeping began in 1895. Sierra snow packs are currently at 1% of the historic average and these snow packs feed reservoirs for the state water project and the California Aqueduct. Ultimately, some of this water does end up in the Mojave Water District region to replenish local groundwater supplies. In addition, our local mountains have had low snow pack runoff from these, from these local mountains is the main source of replenishing our groundwater aquifers here in the Victor Valley. Oh, sorry. Got to get my game going here. Sorry. There we go. So there's our pictures of Lake Oroville just showing some differences between 2011 and 2014. We don't see it so much down here in Southern California, but further north where the reservoirs are very visible, you can see the effect of the drought. So the state's response to this historic drought, they've done a couple of things. In January of 2014, the governor declared a drought state of emergency, calling for voluntary reduction in water use of about 20%. Additional declarations of drought state emergency were made in April and December of 2014. Earlier this year, it was determined that the voluntary measures were not meeting the mark and as a result, on April 1st, Governor Brown issued an executive order directing the State Water Board to impose restrictions on urban water suppliers, of which we are one, to achieve a statewide 25% reduction in potable water use from June of 2015 through February of 2016. On May 5th, the State Water Board adopted emergency regulations which require water providers to reduce their potable water production by various percentages with 2013 as the base year. The Victorville Water District was placed in the 28% conservation tier. These tiers were determined by the state by looking at each provider's residential gallons per capita per day figure from the summer of 2014. One comment I heard at one of the previous meetings was the question of whether we've received credit, if you will, for our previous conservation efforts. And the answer is yes, we have. We could have been put in a 36% reduction tier as some other water providers have been. And because our residential gallons per capita per day were lower, we were placed in the 28% tier rather than having to go all the way up to 36%. The district is also required as part of these regulations to prepare and submit a monthly report to the State Water Board showing our water produced as well as conservation efforts undertaken for that month. So the Water District's response, as I noted, we are in the 28% conservation tier. That means that we are supposed to reduce our potable water production by 28% for the next nine months from June 1 of 2015 through February of 2016. To achieve this goal, we feel that we need to ramp up our conservation efforts. And there are two main, two main things that we're proposing to meet this mandate. The ordinance and the resolution. So I'd like to go through the main provisions of the ordinance and then I'll go through the resolution. I know the resolution is the next item, but I'll just talk about it all at once. The ordinance is derived from and includes many elements of the Water Shortage Contingency Plans from the former Baldi Mesa Water District, the Victor Valley Water District and the current Victorville Municipal Code, Water Conservation Chapter 13.6. Generally, this ordinance establishes the standards, guidelines, and procedures for year-round water conservation. It specifies restrictions, prohibitions, and limits on water waste. And it includes requirements from the new State Water Control Board Regulations that were adopted on May 5th. So there are four different stages in the ordinance and as the stages increase, the level of conservation increases as well. Conservation Stage 1 would be in effect at all times and basically water waste is prohibited. Water waste is defined to be unreasonable or unbeneficial use of water or use which allows flooding or runoff to occur. The ordinance establishes designated hours for summer and winter outdoor sprinkler operations and those are there to avoid evaporation in the summer and icing conditions in the winter. So watering at other times is allowed if a handheld hose with a nozzle is used. So it's just the automated sprinkler that's limited in terms of hours. Various other water wasting activities are prohibited. It all makes, it's pretty basic and common sense stuff, allowing leaks to continue. You have to stop the leak within 48 hours of notification from the district. The use of water in fountains is, it can't be potable water unless it's recirculating. Washing down hardscapes is prohibited unless it's needed for health and safety. Outdoor watering, which results in excess runoff in amounts sufficient to cause flooding or cause damage, is prohibited. Applying water within 48 hours of measurable rain, that's directly from the state regulations. And it also sets limits for water intensive landscape for new or rehabilitated residential and commercial properties. And this is already in the Victorville Municipal Code. It's taken directly from the municipal code. So that, those are the main provisions of what is in Stage 1. So moving on to Stage 2, this is when we're trying to increase our conservation efforts. The goal is a 10 to 28% reduction. And in this Stage 2, it would require an action of the District Board of Directors, a recommendation from the general manager, and then the adoption of a resolution by the board. In Stage 2, outdoor sprinkler watering would be limited to three days per week. We would establish an odd and even schedule for the sprinkler watering. It would either be Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday for the even numbered addresses and Wednesday, Friday, Sunday for the odd addresses. And then those without addresses such as parks, LMAs, or large users with larger irrigation systems would be prohibited from watering on Wednesdays, Saturdays. Basically, we're trying to cut down two days a week. There is a, there is a provision for an alternative reduction plan. If they can, those large users can show a plan how they can still achieve the water conservation goal without cutting out those two days per week. That is also an option because we know for some that even cutting out two days a week of watering of turf could be very detrimental to the large landscapes. Also, pools and spas must be covered when not in use. Car washing limits. We, car washing would only be allowed with commercial car washes with recirculating systems. So that's in Stage 2. Stage 3, it's getting extremely serious because we're really ramping it up at that point. It would be water use from hydrants would be limited to firefighting and what's necessary for health and safety. The construction meters would be removed. That would mean a saying that we don't have enough water to support construction. Outdoor sprinkling, sprinklers would be prohibited and hand watering and low volume irrigation would still be okay on designated days and hours. And then going on to Stage 4, imagine an earthquake. Imagine water pipes broken all over the city. Imagine a real inability to meet our basic water needs. That would be a Stage 4. No outdoor water, outdoor landscape watering with potable water. No filling of pools or spas. No washing of vehicles and nurseries to discontinue use of potable water. So the ordinance does also provide provisions for hardship exceptions. People and organizations could submit a request for hardship exception. Those would be reviewed. The ordinance does also, and a determination would be made by the general manager. An appeal process is included in the ordinance. So if somebody felt that that was not the correct decision, they would have the ability to appeal that decision. So education and enforcement. Clearly, the goal is to reduce water usage and I, our, this is only going to work if people are educated about it and informed about how they can assist with the effort. And it is our great hope that through education that we can achieve these goals. But should the education not prove fruitful, there are enforcement provisions in the ordinance. There's a process that's spelled out in the ordinance about notices of violations and warnings. So people are given a notice and a warning to correct the situation. warnings, so people are given a notice and a warning to correct the situation. Then there could be administrative citations with fines, anywhere from $100 up to $500, depending on the stage of the water shortage. Other enforcement options are included, including misdemeanor citations, civil suits, or even shutting off water service, but I think it would have to be a very unusual situation to go to that level. The ordinance also includes provisions and a process for appeals of those notices of violations and citations and fines. At the last meeting, the question was, well, what's the impact of this on residents and businesses? So I have a slide specific to this. So what is the immediate impact? In Stage 1, it, a lot of this is already occurring. There's designated winter and summer watering hours. We've been advertising that for quite a while. There's a prohibition on water waste and runoff. That's already in our municipal code. There's other things, no watering within 48 hours, that's of measurable rain, that's a new item. And a couple of other things are new items, but these are basic measures that I think are very common-sense, to use our water very conservatively and to preserve it and not waste it. As I mentioned earlier, there are two items. The second item is the resolution, which we are recommending to go to a Stage 2 water shortage. And that, as I mentioned, there would be a number of, there would be a number of steps that we would take. That would establish the odd and even watering schedule for outdoor sprinklers, so we would be cutting back to three days a week on outdoor irrigation. So that would be a significant change for the public and for our businesses. And other things requiring pools and spas to be covered, that is a brand-new thing. One thing in preparing for this, we're trying to look at where the water is. It's very interesting, when you look at the summer months in Victorville, May through September, generally defined to be summer months, our water usage, our water production increases 65 percent over the non-summer months. So that really, to me, is an indication that a lot of the water use is outdoor irrigation. And that's what Stage 2 goes to, is to try and limit, rein in the outdoor irrigation and really try and make a significant dent.
You said it increases in the non-summer months?
No, it increased, if I misspoke. It increases in the summer months by 65 percent compared to the non-summer months. I got the figures from my colleague in the water department, and I looked at them, and then I looked at them actually on the Excel spreadsheet and did the math myself, because I thought, hmm, maybe there'll be a 30 or 40 percent increase, but a 65 percent increase. It really does track with the temperatures in the outdoor irrigation. So that would be, that would be a big change for our customers, is those limits on outdoor irrigation. So wrapping up here, I want to say help is available. We do have a water conservation division with extremely knowledgeable and very helpful staff. We have the Cash for Grass program in partnership with the Mojave Water Agency. We have residential conservation kits. We'll go out and do water use evaluations. We'll help people identify leaks. We're doing, in the midst of doing a toilet exchange program, again, in partnership with Mojave Water Agency for high-efficiency toilets. Very soon, we'll have a searchable online plant database to help people who are thinking about redoing their landscapes away from water, high-water-use plants. So we do have a lot of resources available, and we are out there currently. We will continue to be out there. We want to help people comply and save water. Our interest isn't in fining and penalizing people. Our interest is conserving water and avoiding water waste. So there is help available, and we look forward to the challenge. That is basically my presentation, and Christian, you want to add a few?
Actually, just wanted to see if you have any questions specifically. We'd be glad to answer.
I'd like to go to the enforcement question. This is, it seems all proper, and we all need to do our part, and I understand that we all will. But obviously, there's going to be those that offend and don't abide by this, and probably a lot of folks that just won't know that the city has adopted this ordinance and this resolution to go into a Stage 2, and what that ultimately means, and potentially, what it could mean to them from an enforcement obligation, a potential fine, and any subsequent court action. Could you explain to us exactly how that process is going to work? Who's responsible for that process? How the appeal process will work? Although I know it's included somewhat in here, I think it's important that we bring that out tonight, to make sure that it's publicly known exactly what's going to happen, should people actually violate this once it's in place.
Okay. I will be happy to address that. One point I'd like to make is that we do currently have prohibitions on water waste in the municipal code, so we have been doing enforcement. You haven't heard about it, because we've been doing a great job notifying, educating people, and working with them to gain compliance. So how it works currently is that our water conservation staff, they respond to complaints about nuisance water. They do proactively go out and look for excess water runoff. When they find that, they go and they contact the customer and let them know, this is a problem, please correct it. And then if the customer needs some assistance, you know, whatever the resources are, you know, usually it's a matter of calling the plumber, or calling their landscape contractor in the case of commercial properties, or residentially, just getting out there and fixing a sprinkler head. The vast majority of the people that we contact, they fix it, it's all done. If there's anything that it goes beyond that point, what we do is we refer it over to the code enforcement division in the development department, and they would actually open up a case and, you know, notify the customer, give them a notice of violation. So there's another opportunity to fix it. If they continue to blatantly disregard it or show no progress at all in fixing the situation, then they could be issued a citation. But to be honest with you, I'm not aware of any that we have actually had to go to the mat with, in terms of, you know, issuing a citation. It really is about compliance, not fining people. In terms of the process that's outlined in the ordinance, pardon me, I'm going to look at my notes a little more closely. It does specify that the first, we don't fine people from the get-go. They receive a notice of violation that tells them what we observed, when we observed it, what portion of the code has been violated, and then telling them what it is that they need to do to correct it. So the notice of violation is the first step, and then after that, if it's not corrected within the given timeframe, they could be issued an administrative citation. In talking about this internally, I agree 100 percent. A huge amount of this is getting the word out to the public, and we were talking about that. You know, my recommendation would be that we, you know, spend at least a good, solid month. We do a bill insert, we do press releases, we get it on our website, that we just contact all the community organizations, the churches, you know, any way we can get the word out to people about what the new rules are and what that means for the public specifically, that we do an extensive public education campaign, so that people aren't caught off-guard. I know there are people that don't read their bill inserts. I wish they would, because there's good information in there, but even if they don't listen to the radio, read a newspaper, aren't on Facebook, or Twitter, or any of the other media that we have, even if they're violating it technically, they would get a door hanger from the conservation division saying, you know, you have an issue, please correct it. There would be many contacts before they would get to the point of a fine.
Okay. And that basically answers my question, because my concern is that, obviously, code enforcement in the development department has a lot more that they're dealing with, and this council has tasked them with a lot more to deal with. So my concern was getting too much into their realm before the water district had properly dealt with it. Sounds like you've got all kinds of stops in place before you would ever get to the point of getting over to them. Of course, if it does ever get over to them, you know, my concern is that they go out to address a water issue, they find all kinds of other issues, and, you know, it opens Pandora's box. Obviously, you know, that's not what we're looking for here. We are looking for compliance. It would be someone hiding underneath a rock that wouldn't know about a drought in California right now, so with all the media attention, all the outlets that you just mentioned, it'd be hard, someone would be hard-pressed to state that they did not have knowledge that we were in a drought, and that there were these conservation efforts in place. So I just appreciate what the water district is doing in that regard.
Couple things, not exactly questions. Most people water their lawns at night. If they've got a broken sprinkler head that's shooting a stream of water straight in the air, gallons and gallons per minute, you don't know it. They're not willfully violating the rule. They got a broken sprinkler head. If it's dumping water on the street, there'll be some evidence. If it's dumping it on the lawn, they may get up in the morning and never see evidence. I've had the problem myself. I think it's really important that everybody, once a week, manually turn on your sprinkler system and make sure all the sprinklers are operating correctly. It takes no time. It's 10 seconds, 15 seconds per cycle. You can do it manually. It's not hard to do. The other thing, and this is one of Mr. Caldwell's comments that I really agreed with. Our hot water heater is in the garage on one side of the house. Our shower, that my wife and I use, is in the bathroom on the other side of the house. It used to take, I swear it was a minute, minute and a half for hot water to get to the shower. My brother-in-law told me about a simple little device. It's about the size of two fingers. It's got an electrical connection in the center, and you mount it under your sink. And you set the time. It comes on maybe an hour before you expect to use the shower, and it begins heating water backward in the hot water line. So it heats the water back towards the hot water heater. It is remarkably effective. You get hot water in your shower now, if you start this little device, and I've never noticed a change in the electric bill. And that's, it was just a huge saver before we ever had a drought, we put that in. So I would encourage people to pay attention to those two items, and there are probably lots more. If you go to watering every other day, don't water twice as long, okay? That doesn't help.
And I did want to mention that we do shift schedules with our conservation staff, so we do have folks out at night.
Oh, good.
And they find some very interesting water features at night, 15 feet shooting up and more. So we have done that, because we recognize that there's a lot going on in the evenings.
We can do it ourselves.
Exactly, yeah.
Brian, one thing to add, too. There's a second tier of this in terms of penalties. The water district, actually, if it doesn't comply, could, at some point, be subject to penalties itself. So this is a state mandate. The state water resources board wants to see, basically, cooperation, and they've said that they're not going to impose penalties on the water district, but just so the public knows, I mean, if the water district doesn't achieve these goals, the state has the ability to provide fines actually to the water district, so.
This is a question. And I'm going to get you to reinforce what I think the city manager said, that we're going to remove median strips of grass all through the city. Is that part of our plan?
Actually, we're already working on that.
I'm sorry?
We are already working on that, and are also planning on some of our large lawn areas, reducing those as well. Playing fields, we're trying to keep those as green as we possibly can for kids to play on at our parks and recreation facilities, but a lot of the verges and the areas that aren't directly playing field are going to look a little browner than they used to.
Just so everybody knows, the city of Victorville is the largest customer of the water district. So where we can save, it's going to have a bigger effect than most anyone else.
That's correct.
Well, I appreciate everything that has been stated, and yes, I understand that we have to comply, but I'm afraid I don't know how to fix sprinklers.
Call us.
We can help with that.
We look for a motion to introduce the ordinance, first reading, and actually, this is a first and second reading. Under the water code, if you adopt tonight, you do not need a second reading. This will become effective immediately. And assuming you go ahead with this, then we want you to consider item B3, which will be the water conservation resolution that will bring us up to Stage 2.
B3 will be a separate item?
Correct.
I'll move that.
I'll read the title of the ordinance, first, Mayor Garcia. "In ordinance of the Board of Directors of the Victorville Water District, adopting a water conservation program pursuant to Water Code Section 375 and amending the district's water shortage contingency plan to comply with emergency regulations adopted by the state water resources control board pertaining to drought conservation."
Now I'll move adoption.
Second.
Without further reading.
Without further reading.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. McEckern, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries with Mr. Negretti and Mr. Cox absent.
We now move to item B3, and I open the public hearing, and I do have, I believe, one card.
This is Mayor, Councilman. Like I've said before, I've lived on this desert since 1969. We cut our water. How much more water do we have to cut? Taking out lawns, left my trees, left my green belt, because I don't have to water them during the summer. I hope it, is this desert just going to become dirt? I mean, that's my big thing. I understand the state is saying you have to do this, but as a homeowner, going through, every time there's a new toilet that comes out that uses less water, you put them in your house. Every time there's a new faucet that uses less water, more aeration, you put that in. Your sprinklers, we've changed, we've had three different types of sprinklers in our yards in the last four years. Now we're looking at, little bit of lawn we have left is $29,000 to take out and not have it just plain dirt. You know, so I understand we have to do this for the state, but it's going to be a tremendous expense, you know, to the people who live here, if they, whenever they go to do this, or you decide, hmm, I'm not going to wash my bed sheets this week. You know, Johnny doesn't get to take a shower today, he has this tomorrow, because we have to cut back. That's the real life that I have to look at and my neighbors are looking at. You know, so that's just a heartache. Can't grow our vegetables. No more vegetables anymore, no more fruit, because we have to cut. And I understand that we have to do this, but I just wish somebody would realize what some of us homeowners have done, and the money we have spent over the years to comply. You know, a couple of years ago, it was cut the water back, right? Does everybody remember that, I hope? So what do we all do? We cut our water back. And so now, because we didn't keep using that water, we've got to cut back even more. So at some point, I know, where are we going to get the water from? But on the other hand, the other question, I hope at some point in time, somebody can answer it to the newspaper. Whenever we have measurable rainfall in this valley, so we don't water for 48 hours, which I understand that. I have little things in my yard that tell me that, but where are we getting that information from? Is it still from the old Air Force Base? Is that where we're getting our temperature, our rainfall? Is that where we're getting it from? Because the water over there and the water over there where I live are two different things, the amount of water that comes down out of the sky. So that would be something else, too. Just to inform us, there's nothing we can do, but just to inform us. That's all.
Thank you. I don't have any other cards. Sorry, we'll be closing. So I will be closing the public hearing. And do we have any comments?
Well, you know, I think in my understanding, talking with staff, and I don't want you to come back up here, I just ask you to talk with the previous speaker, but there is a recognition of what has already been done and there has to be a recognition that's called for, is my understanding, by the state as well as what we're going to be looking at. So if you have cut back over the last several years and you've done what you can, or you already have drought tolerant landscaping and you can't cut back water anymore because you're not watering grass, there's going to be recognition of that. So to say that what you've done is going to go unnoticed is completely false, and I would ask you to talk with the city staff that made the presentation because I know that there is going to be recognition of that. To what degree, that's the part that I would ask you to talk with staff with that. But I understand, but do you just need to talk with city staff about that? Because the comment that there will not be any recognition of what people have already done or what the High Desert has done is absolutely false. We have done more than the rest of the state. In fact, I think we're recognized statewide for what we have done and we will continue to be. Other than that, I think we have to do this. It's something that's mandated by the state, and I would support moving the resolution. That would be a motion.
Do we have a second? Second.
Motion by Mr. McEckern, second by Ms. Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries with Mr. Negretti and Mr. Cox absent.
You know, I guess I do have to say, there's nothing in this ordinance that deals with personal hygiene, how many showers you take, how often you wash your clothes. It's all outside use of water, and that's an area where we can all do better, no matter what we're doing now. We can do 10% better. We can do 15%, 20% better. We all can.
Thank you. Now we will be moving on to item B four, and I do not have any cards. I open item B four, and this is, this will be rescheduled for our meeting of June 2nd, 2015. At this time, no action will be taken. Am I correct?
Correct. We're just asking for a continuance of this item until the June 2nd, but the public hearing is open, and the public hearing will remain open until that date.
Thank you. I don't see anyone that wants to speak, and I don't have any cards. So this item will be continued to our June 2nd, 2015 meeting.
Correct.
So we go on to the consent calendar?
Yes.
So we move on to consent calendar.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McEckern, second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries with Mr. Negretti and Mr. Cox absent.
Now we have item D, written communications, and we have a presentation of the following resolutions. Do we have a presentation of the following resolutions?
Madam Mayor, these are basically resolutions for the Water District, which basically it's an initiation of proceedings. What they're doing here is recommending that we start setting public hearing dates for the basically fixing, levying, and collecting of the standby water charges, which is required every year. So this is essentially the first step in that process, and what it does, it sets up the public hearing dates and schedules public hearings with respect to the fixing, levying of the standby water charges.
Thank you. So do we take each item individually, or we make a, or do we take a motion on this?
You could take a motion for both items together.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. McEckern. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries with Mr. Negretti and Mr. Cox absent.
Now we have item E, public comments, and I do have one card.
D two is the next item, Mayor Garcia.
I think I'm giving all over the place here. Item D two, request for variance. Be a recommendation that the City Council approve or deny the request for a variance from the requirement to connect to the public sewer system for 13863 Sunset Drive at discretion of the City Council. I do not have any cards.
Madam Mayor, after reading the cost difference for the homeowner to connect to the sewer versus replacing the pit, I would make a motion to approve the variance.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. McEckern. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries with Mr. Negretti and Mr. Cox absent.
Now we have item D three, presentation of resolution number 15-027, entitled, "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Victorville, California Authorizing the Execution of Amendment One to the Cal Home Standard Agreement 11-CALHOME-8227 for Purposes of Mortgage Assistance Program within the portion of the former 1993 Victor Valley Redevelopment Project, area located within City of Victorville, and extending the term of the standard agreement until April 5th, 2016." Madam Clerk, can you read the recommendation?
The recommendation is to approve resolution number 15-027.
A question of staff, is this to discontinuation of housing funds that came out of the former redevelopment agency housing project area?
No, these are unrelated in that they were, they were funds granted to the city by the State Housing Community Development Department for use in a former project area. We still have the responsibility to expend those funds, and effectively what this item is doing is just reprogramming how the funds were intended to be used when we applied for the funds. We had proposed the use of these funds for both the mortgage assistance program and an owner occupied rehab program. The owner occupied rehab program is a program that hasn't been utilized to the fullest and largely because there's equity requirements for the homeowner to actually be in a position to use those grant funds. So there's been monies unexpended, and it's believed by staff to be not likely to expend those funds and comply with the grants, so therefore, because we have seen greater utilization under the mortgage assistance program, we've sought for an amendment with California Department of Housing and Community Development. They've agreed, so that's effectively what this amendment is doing, is reprogramming or shifting those monies to be spent under our standard mortgage assistance program.
Okay. I'll move approval.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. McEckern. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries with Mr. Negretti and Mr. Cox absent.
Item D four, standard lease agreement for building 744 at Southern California Logistics Airport Authority. Madam Clerk, can you read the recommendation?
Yes, the recommendation would be to approve the lease agreement between the Airport Authority and Leading Edge Aviation Services.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McEckern, second by Mr. Kennedy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries with Mr. Negretti and Mr. Cox absent.
I'd just like to note, it's great to see us continue our relationship with Leading Edge and everything that's going on out at the airport. Most of the planes we all fly in today are painted in one way or another by that company, and many of them out at SCLA, so it's kind of a nice thing to see that going on in our local airport.
True, that's wonderful.
And they're leasing now, Keith, three buildings?
They're leasing. This is actually their fourth facility. They have three hangar complexes with four hangar airplane bays, and then this is an incidental for storage and parts and things of that.
Moving on to D five, Mojave River Walk Project, lease agreement with Victor Valley College. Madam Clerk, will you please read the recommendation?
Yes, this would be to approve the lease agreement between the city and Victor Valley College regarding the use of property required for the construction of the Mojave River Walk Project.
They are leasing this from us for a dollar. Am I, do I have that right?
No, actually, we would be leasing from the college.
The land for the loop and the...
This is land at the northeast corner, I believe, of Fish Hattery Road and Bear Valley Road. My understanding is it's vacant property and would effectively serve as a parking lot and serve as a node for, I guess, entrance into the actual River Walk Project.
So we are leasing from them?
We would lease from them, and the way this transaction is structured is we would lease it to them for a dollar. The purpose for lease largely is because of the grant that we're applying for to actually construct the first segments of the project and to help demonstrate, you know, certain elements of site control, is my understanding, for the purpose of this lease. This lease was approved by the college board last week, so this is just awaiting your approval and will be included as a part of the overall grant application.
Yeah, and if I could just follow up, I know through Sandbag as well as through Southern California Association of Governments, our River Walk is starting to get some attention, believe it or not, thanks to staff and their persistent efforts over the years, even though this council may have at times waffled on whether or not we thought it was the most appropriate thing to be doing. It's actually gaining traction because there's a lot more emphasis on this type of project, and so there's a lot of dollars out there and a lot of money being purposed to projects such as the River Walk Project because of the cycling, the walking, the running, the bicycling, and I know even I believe people could ride their horses along the same path, and how that will tie into the Yecoloma Bridge and get over into Apple Valley. So there's a lot of interest in this project, and we're seeing a lot more money come towards it.
For motion?
I'll make that motion to approve that.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McEckern, second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries with Mr. Negretti and Mr. Cox absent.
Item D six, presentation of resolution number 15-035, entitled, "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Victorville, California, declaring the sale of city-owned real property located at the southwest corner of Amerosa and La Mesa Roads to be for the common benefit and redifying the execution of the standard offer agreement and escrow instructions for purchase of real estate." Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
The recommendation would be to adopt resolution number 15-035, as stated by Mayor Garcia, and approving an additional appropriation of revenue in the estimated amount of $1,050,000.
That's kind of an odd way of saying it, but we normally appropriate expenses, but this actually means we're acknowledging that we're going to receive $1,050,000 for this sale.
Correct.
If anyone was listening carefully to that.
Madam Mayor, and maybe for the benefit of the public, this item is a subject of
past discussions we've had in closed session and does involve property adjacent to Chuck E. Cheese over at the La Mesa-Nesqually Interchange on the southwest side, and effectively involves property that was residual from an acquisition to help build the interchange there. So we've had this property on the market for some time, and we actually had two competing offers to get us to this point of transaction, but effectively the item before you does have conditions that in fact franchise and planning approvals be obtained prior to the close of escrow, but it is proposing the construction of a five-story hotel. It'd be a Hilton flag, new to the West Coast, and they're calling it House to Home, or House to, Home to Suites, I'm sorry. It's one that I haven't seen or visited, but from what I've seen about it, it looks similar to like a Marriott Residence Inn type concept, so should be fairly nice. As far as the economics of the transaction, the sale price exceeded what we had been advised of as the broker opinion of value, so we feel confident about this transaction, believe it's the right one, and have recommended approval.
Thank you. Have a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. McEckern. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries with Mr. Negretti and Mr. Cox absent.
We now move on to E, public comments. And I believe I have some cards here. The first card that I have is Al Gattil.
I come here tonight because I read in the paper, and I know you're going to say the paper, that you raised taxes, sales taxes, quite a bit, and that you're going to make a lot more money now than you were a couple of years ago. And I read all the things, you're going to fix the sidewalks, you're going to fix the streets, you're going to fix the park, you're going to fix the water, but I didn't hear you say one thing about getting more cops. That's supposed to be your number one thing, is to protect the people of the city. I can go over a bump in the street once in a while and have a few extra cops on duty. The biggest thing you've got to do with the street now is put some lines in because you can't see the lines. But I mean, it's more important to have police than it is to spend all that money on sidewalks and cities and stuff. I'd rather see more police. And the security part I'm talking about is, I watch a lot of the news and I keep track of everything that's going on. And the bus came in town last night with the windows blocked 10:30 at night with people from another country. Nobody knows where they're from. They took them to some detention center up here, and the city, did you guys know anything about it? Shake your head, you don't have to answer. I mean, the city should know about that. There's going to be a war in this country. ISIS is in this country. Al Qaeda's in this country. They've been in this country for years, and this is the perfect place for them to take. They're used to fighting in the desert and the mountains. They'd love to have that airport. They got, the Fordy goes all the way across the country. They can either block people from coming up here, or they can go as far as they want. We've got a military base right here, but they could block them easy from getting over here. They can shoot the plane down with them shoulder rockets. And once they get control of an area, the military is of no use except with their guns because they can't use their planes to bomb, they can't use their tanks to kill people with because they'll kill all the Americans, too. So I wish that, you know, they said on TV, the American people are too busy doing things and they're not paying attention to what's going on around them, and that's the CIA.
You have 30 seconds, Mr. Gattil.
...people are not paying attention to what's going on around them. And I believe everything they say, and there will be a war in this country. And this country will go down if they don't get rid of that hick in the White House, Obama. He's mentally ill, and he's very, very childish.
10 seconds.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next one is Luen Laflure.
Mayor, one of the things, this is what I wanted to bring up. Actually, the incident that he was just talking about was on May 17th. It was after, well, after 10:30 at night. YouTube has taken down the video, but the video is still out there to be seen if you want it. And DHS was bringing in people that had crossed the border. And DHS was bringing in people that had crossed the border that said that they wanted asylum. That's the new catchphrase. And they were brought here to Victorville. Entire bus load. And nobody ever called back. Whenever, you know, once, once it started going around and I started looking at things on the, on the internet and not just one person's, but a number of them, a little bit more credit, what I would consider a little bit more credible possibly, nobody could be bothered with calling me back. You know, I know DHS runs their own little world, but, and it's a federal prison or federal thing out here in Victorville. So I, do you all not have any, I guess, no say? Or there's no need to know that we have Somalis and East Africans coming into this country seeking asylum? You know, they're coming here illegally. And then we ship them up here in the middle of the night. You know, we did this last year down on the 10, outside of San Diego and Marietta area for ones that were coming over mainly from Central America and Mexico. And we, you know, stood there with the mayor and some of the council members there in Marietta and stopped those buses. You know, there's no way now, I guess, for us to figure out when they're coming with these other ones. And like I said, nobody here in the city, if you all did know, that's fine, but nobody could ever give any quote to the newspaper or call a citizen back. You know, so if you didn't know, now you know. I can let you know it was Anna Fuentes. She was the original person that did it. Once the gentleman realized that he was being taped, he asked her to turn off her phone.
You have 30 seconds.
So, you know, that's where it is. So they're coming in and we don't know what they're coming in with. And whenever they are released, they'll be released right here because there's no, there's no deporting them anymore. So hopefully somebody has a plan somewhere for that besides citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. I have one more card. Maggie Lowe.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Very briefly, I would just like to comment upon some of the things that were already stated here. While I'm in agreement with the principles of some of the people that have spoken here, I think they might be in the wrong venue. The city has limited capacity to control Homeland Security and President Obama and those kinds of, kinds of things. I mean, I appreciate their perspective and their opinions and like I said, I do agree with a lot of it. But I think we need to stick to issues that are a little bit closer to home, like our local police, our local traffic problems, our local business situation. And, and, and I wanted to say also, I didn't come prepared, I wanted to say that one of the prevailing perspectives or perceptions, I should say, that I get here, and this is a feeling as a 17-year homeowner in the city of Victorville that I get, is what I hear a lot of is newer, bigger, and better. Newer, bigger, and better, and more is better, like a hotel. That's the last damn thing I want to see in this city is another hotel. Okay? So I feel like the people that are established here, longtime residents that are vested here, not working down in LA, just coming here to hang their hat at the end of the night for cheaper housing, but those of us that are invested in the welfare and the quality of living in the city, we're being left behind. Now, that tirade being over with, I want to be more specific. On April 30th, you know, I've talked to you guys about the traffic at Mesa-Linda and Yucalipus. On the evening 5:30 to, I'm sorry, 5:35 to 6:55 PM, I documented 16 people who did not make a complete stop at the four-way intersection of Mesa-Linda and Yucalipus. And that was a slow night, my friends. That was slow. That was on a Thursday evening before the prime traffic had hit. Jumping forward to today, I had a interesting conversation with code enforcement supervisor and about the vendors that we have here on the streets on the weekends. I took photos of and spoke to a couple of ladies that were selling their flowers and their Mother Day stuff right there at the old Albertson's parking lot at Bear Valley west of Amethyst. And you know, these people are not even, they're nonplussed by the fact that I'm sitting there in my car, taking pictures of them and telling them I'm calling the police. So then when I do call the police, let me tell you what happens. Lots of money is wasted there because...
30 seconds.
Lots of, lots, thank you. Lots of money is wasted there because that generally generates a call from the watch commander, Maggie, this is what's going on in the city today. And it turns into a very interesting and informative 20, 30 minutes of this sergeant's time. So I find out from code enforcement today that code enforcement has...
10 seconds.
Police radios. So when I call dispatch, I don't want to hear anymore about, call code enforcement on Monday. Friday and Saturday, we have active code enforcement.
Your time is up.
And we need that. And I'm going to be calling them and I may be jumping down the throats of dispatch if they don't pick up that phone or that radio and call the code enforcement that's on duty for these vendors. Thank you.
Thank you. Our city manager is not here. Do, do we have anything?
I don't have anything.
Nothing?
No comments.
Council members? Board?
No, have a request to agendize the consideration of a resolution to support Senator Feinstein's bill on the Desert Protection and Recreation Act for a future meeting when all five are here.
The only thing I would have to add is I recently attended the Southern California Association of Governments along with Councilmember Negretti, who's not here this evening. But we did get the opportunity to hear a little bit about the governor's greenhouse gas reduction plan and, and along with the drought provisions that we've been forced to deal with tonight. And they are serious. The greenhouse gas reduction requirements are somewhat not as serious and somewhat questionable. Could be possibly the worst thing that ever happened to the state of California is one of the comments that I heard from a very large developer, all the way from that to the level of it's the best thing that could ever happen to California from a, a, a person that believes that California is the worst offender of greenhouse gases. Whether or not we are or, or we are not, the question remains, California cannot save the world. And so it's kind of questionable as to why we'd be requested to do those type of things. All that being said, I'm curious as to how that affects this city. And I would ask staff to allow or come back to the council. I don't need a full-blown presentation necessarily, but for us to understand how it affects us at this level, the governor's executive order and what that means and what we're going to be required to be doing and what kinds of decisions we're going to be making in the future. You know, it's one thing when the council gets to sit up here and make decisions based upon deliberation and, and we all get to have our own opinion. When we're forced to do something, although I think it was the appropriate thing to do tonight with respect to water reduction, but when we're forced to do something, it kind of really negates the purpose of us and, and why we get to sit up here and make decisions. So with respect to this, I would just ask that staff come back to the council, kind of maybe informally, let us know what's going to happen. And I'm sure at some point in the future, it'll be more formal because we'll actually have to take action. But it's something that I'd ask to come back.
Thank you. Now we have Councilman Kennedy's request to agendize the resolution for the desert conservation, recreation conservation. Is this for our next scheduled meeting?
And we're all here.
About when everyone's here? Do we know when that will be or?
Maybe the next meeting.
Let staff figure that out.
Well, we need a full council.
Okay.
I don't think Mr. Negretti has any plans, but I think Mr. Cox is going to be in Missouri for a couple of weeks. And I just don't know if he'll be back for the June meeting. So let's just figure out when.
Okay, cool.
Very well. Anything else?